Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Whitehall City Council Voted Meeting, Tuesday, November 19, 2024. Before we get started, I would like to read a message due to ongoing issues with Zoom platform. Tonight's council agenda and voting meeting will not be live on Facebook. It will be uploaded on Wednesday morning. We're very sorry for any inconvenience this may cause. At this time, if we could, please stand for mobile silence and the pleasure of the lead.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Og, would you call? Roll, please.
Smith.
Present.
Harkar.
Present.
Dixon.
Here.
Brown.
Present.
Elmore.
Present.
Morrison.
Present.
Heck.
Present.
President Protem.
President Protem, I'd like to excuse the absent member of the council.
I will second. Ms. Og, please come along.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Absent member has been excused. At this time, we do approval of minutes, November 6, 2024, Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes, as well as November 12, 2024, Agenda and Committee Meeting Minutes.
As Mr. Protem, I have an addition to the meeting minutes, committee meeting minutes from November 12. I had spoken to Ms. Og a little earlier. I had looked at the minutes, and it talked a lot about arbitration, but it didn't include Attorney Nicodemas's statement. So this is what Ms. Og has added to the minutes. It says, "City Attorney Nicodemas stated that the arbitration should be about the issue of the termination and the cause for it. The arbiter should limit it to just those specific issues. Because of this, Counselor Dixon felt it was time to bring this legislation forward. If it were a conflict of interest, he would have not done so, but based on that determination, he thought it was perfectly fine to do this." And I just wanted to let you know about those additions, about addition.
Okay, we could have a motion to approve minutes as amended.
President Protem, I ask that we approve the minutes on November 6, November 12 with the agenda.
I will second.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Minutes have been approved. Now we will move to standing committee reports met on November 12. We will start with Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, President Protem. Administration and Financial Management did meet on Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have several pieces of legislation tonight. We will meet again next week and around 6:30.
All right, thank you. Next will be Community and Auditor Advocacy, Chairperson Harkar.
Yes, thank you, President Protem. We met last week. There's no drafts or pending legislation under this committee this evening, but we will meet again next week sometime after 6:30.
All right, thank you. Next will be Community Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Smith.
Thank you, President Protem. Community Standards and Enforcement also met last week. We have no legislation on the agenda this evening, and we will meet again next week.
Thank you. Next will be Economic Development, Chairperson Dixon.
Thank you, President Protem Morrison. Economic Development did meet last week. Minutes are on file. We have three pieces of legislation on the agenda tonight, and we will meet in these chambers next week after 6:30.
Thank you. Next will be Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Brown.
Thank you, President Protem. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met on Tuesday. Our minutes are on file, and we will plan to meet again on this upcoming Tuesday at 6:30.
Thank you. Next will be Public Safety, Chairperson Morrison. We also met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next week sometime after 6:30. Next is Park and Recreation, Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, President Protem. Park and Recreation met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have no legislation on the agenda tonight, and we will meet again this coming Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Next, we'll have officials' reports, and we will start with Mayor Michael T. Bivens.
Thank you, Mr. President Protem, members of council. Everyone that is here this evening, welcome, including Merle back in chambers. I'm just excited to have him back. From the mayor's office, one thing I want to say, I was not able to be at the council member, our council meeting immediately after the soft launch of the, of the mobile city hall, and I wanted to thank everyone that was in attendance just for purposes of understanding just the momentous occasion for the way the city is utilizing this resource. Chief Moore provided me with the data, but that vehicle was purchased from the city of Whitehall in 2014 for approximately $180,000, and it served its purpose through the fire department in saving lives all throughout the city of Whitehall. Incidentally, in 2020, it had catastrophic engine failure, so, which took it out of commission, but through warranty, that engine was completely rebuilt, but the fire department at the time did not, did not need it, so it had sat since 2020 out of commission. Upon becoming mayor, you know, I ultimately tried to, tried to get a police vehicle that was also out of commission, but we settled on an EMT vehicle, which is the one that we have, that would have sold on the secondary market for pennies on the dollar, but that Whitehall is going to repurpose it for a life-saving purpose to uplift and strengthen our neighborhoods. It's just a fantastic thing. We are trying and working on doing a soft launch of it in the actual community sometime in December while we're working on the actual calendar that we'll put out for the community in January. But I did meet with one of the community partners today, which is Elevated Wellness, and they're already estimating that their agency is servicing somewhere in excess of 300 to 500 Whitehall residents a month in their agency. So the use of this van and this facility to actually get into the community is going to be a great use, and it's going to be right on time. Secondarily, in the mayor's office, we have done two things. We have created a mayor's official notice to create the Youth Advisory Council, and that has been provided to the schools. And then secondarily, thank you, Councilmember Harkar, along with ETSS. We have translated the secondary mayor's advisory council as it relates to new American citizens in several different languages. And by the end of this week, I will get those posted throughout the community. The goal and the hope is to have both councils stood up and functional in the first month of 2025. So I'm really looking forward to that. And then finally, not a city event, but when my wife says that we're going to do country karaoke, then by God, we're going to do country karaoke. And so this Friday at the local VFW, we will be hosting in support of veterans as it relates to Veterans Day this month. But in support of veterans, we will be hosting, just my wife and I, not a city event, a country karaoke event at our local VFW. Archie is very excited about it. I'm a life member of that VFW, but bring your best country song. We have a DJ that's coming. Wear your hat, get into the spirit. You are fine, as long as you don't sing "The Devil Went Down to Georgia," because that's going to be my song. And, and so it will be a good time. All funds raised will be towards benefiting veterans, and we're just going to have a good time at our VFW this Friday, starting at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next will be City Attorney, Mr. Nicodemas.
Thank you, President Protem. I don't have any numbers to report tonight for a variety of reasons. Office moved, and then IT has been replacing my laptop due to some usage issues with it. Hopefully, when those get cleared up, I'll get some numbers before the end of the year. But under the officials' report, after last week's council meeting, I got a call from most of the DIAS up here on either Charter Section 80 or the ETSS questions. With regards to the Section 80 questions, we talked about it quite a bit. I thought we were all kind of on the same page of what could be done and what couldn't. The questions I got lead me to know that were not. So at this point, I think the easiest thing to move forward is I'm just going to reduce that to writing. I want to try to get that to everybody. I don't have it tonight, should have it before committee next week so that everybody's on the same page with regards to Charter Section 80. And then with regards to the questions of the ETSS, I looked through the contract. I sent Mr. Morrison, who had the question, an email. It didn't occur to me to send it to everybody else, but then I got a couple calls. I think the contract is sufficient. There are federal laws that prohibit and monitor his concerns. The contract and the grants require compliance with state and federal laws. So at the end of the day, I didn't recommend any changes to the agreement that has been presented to council. I think it's sufficient to address any concerns, and that's all I have to say.
I have a comment. City Attorney Nicodemas. I called, made several phone calls to you and left you voicemail texts. And all I would ask is that even though you will probably address council, when I call you, I would expect a phone call back, even if it's to say that I'm trying to gather information, and I will address it when we gather the information. But a return phone call is warranted, and I should not have to call you several times and not get a phone call returned back.
I did not return your phone. We had a conversation on Wednesday. It started to go in circles. And quite frankly, when you started to berate me and attack me on the phone, we got disconnected because I hung up on you.
No, I know you hung up on me.
I know. And that's why, and that's why I did not return your call.
You did not finish my, you did not finish my, my question. I did not finish the question. So instead of you allowing me to finish the question, you hung up the phone. And I would say the same thing to you, okay? In your conversation, in the, in the feel of how you spoke with me, let's just be cordial. We don't have to agree with one another. But at the end of the day, it is disrespectful to hang a phone up on somebody. And I would not hang the phone up on you. I would kindly say, we can disagree with one another. However, this is not going to go anywhere, and let me just put my information in writing. And that is all I'm asking.
From my perspective, your tone went beyond the point of being respectful or getting anywhere, and I was not going to sit there and listen to it anymore. That's why I hung up on you, and that's why I chose not to return your calls.
Okay, and in the future, do not hang the phone up on me.
In the future, do not speak to me like you did on the phone, and I won't hang on the phone to you.
We will take this matter up later.
Are we good now?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is City Auditor, Steve Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Just some items that have been going on in the auditor's office. We have acquired a new postage meter machine that is equipped with e-certify so we can send out certified mailings in a different method than using the little green tear-off card, and it's cheaper. So we opted to, to get into that. And we also got a folder inserter, which the tax department has been putting to good use this week. We've sent out about 2,000 pieces of mail that had to be folded and inserted into these envelopes in the last three days. So, three business days. So it's, it's getting quite a workout. We're still waiting on some, some additional training on this equipment. We also are going to be implementing Civica Authority Tax. It's a new tax software that is supposed to start this month so we can hit the ground running in January and not have to try to run two different systems during tax season. Also, we have been working with a company called Paymentis to get all departments in the city onto a single credit card accepting platform. This means then that we're, you know, paying income taxes, going down to the service department for, you know, building permits, whatever, paying fines at clerk of courts, reserving shelter houses or whatever, you know, rentals through parks and recreation. Everything will be going through this singular platform, which we have never had. We've had multiple ones, and we've had some of those fall apart. So we're looking forward to getting this all up and running. Also, I've got some follow-up questions from the Ohio Department of Taxation on four parcels of property that are owned by the city that we had been receiving property tax bills on. My feeling is these properties were misclassified, and we have applied to get them tax exempted. Two of these properties, by the way, are parks. So we are definitely working towards getting all of that done. Other than that, I would ask for favorable consideration on ordinances 94, 108, 109, 110, 112, 113, and 114. I'll quit talking now.
All right, thank you, Senator. Next is Director of Public Services, Casey Rogers.
Thank you, President Protem Morrison. I don't have much for you tonight. Just looking forward to next week presenting my budget. It'll be myself, development, fire, and the clerk's office. So looking forward to presenting that to you guys. Other than that, just asking for favorable consideration for ordinance 91 tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Director of Public Safety, Van Brer.
I don't have an official report, but I would want to tell you that fire and police continue to do a great job, so you're safe.
Thank you. Next, we have Treasurer Shaquille Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President Protem. Thank you, everybody that's joined us this evening. I do not have an official report. I just echo our auditors' comments.
All right, thank you. We have, the following officials' reports have been filed in this council's office since last meeting and the auditor's financial reports for October 2024. Under, next item is Communications Petitions and Claims. Notice from Ohio Division of Liquor Control for the transfer of a C-1, C-2, and D-6 license from Yearling United, INC., DBA Times Square Beverage and Shop, 578 South Yearling Road, Whitehall, Ohio, 43213, Three Brothers United LLC, 578 South Yearling Road, Whitehall, Ohio, 43213. Now, at this time, we have a public hearing on ordinance 090, 2024, allowing a special permit under 1125.04 to allow vehicle and large equipment repair and light industrial use on the property located at 4011 East Main Street, parcel number 090005829, property owned by Ohio Investment Properties LLC, and declaring an emergency. At this time, I will open a public hearing on ordinance 90, 2024. Are there any proponents for this ordinance to come forward and speak on behalf of this ordinance? I see no one coming forward. Is there any proponents, which I would thank for this ordinance? Please come forward. I see none. If there are no proponents or opposed, I will close this public hearing on ordinance 90, 2024 at 7:20. At this time, we will have our first poll public. You can come forward, state your name, and sign in, and you have up to three minutes to address council if you wish. No one? This time, we will have verification of copies. Ms. Og, call, call on whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Thank you. We now have third reading ordinances. Ordinance number 909, 2024, allowing a special permit under 1125.04 to allow vehicle and large equipment repair and light industrial use on the property located at 4011 East Main Street, parcel number 090005829, property owned by Ohio Investment Properties LLC, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President Protem, I wish to introduce a move for the adoption of ordinance 090, 2024.
Second.
Ordinance 090, 2024 has been introduced for adoption. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, would you please call along?
Smith.
No.
Harkar.
No.
Dixon.
No.
Brown.
No.
Elmore.
No.
Morrison.
No.
Heck.
No.
Ordinance 9, or 090, 2024. Next will be Ordinance 91, 2024, authorizing and approving an amendment to the codified ordinance of the city of Whitehall, 161 Table of Authorized Personnel and Declaring an Emergency.
Mr. President Protem, I'd like to introduce ordinance number 91, 2024, and move for its adoption.
I'll second. Ordinance 91, 2024 has been, excuse me, moved for adoption by Chair, Councilperson Heck, seconded by Councilperson Brown. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, would you please call along?
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance 91, 2024 has been adopted. Next is Resolution 28, 2024, repealing Resolution 202, 24, 2023, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a development agreement with Ethiopian Telwanda Social Services, ETSS.
Mr. President Protem, I would like to introduce Resolution 28, 2024, and move for its adoption.
Second.
Resolution 28, 2024 has been introduced by Chair, Councilperson Dixon, seconded by Councilperson Smith. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, would you please call along?
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
I abstained.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Resolution 28, 2024 has been adopted. Will now move to second reading. The ordinance 93, 2024, Title One, authorizing the creation of the OWDA Improvement Fund 325, appropriating $5 million from unappropriated monies in the OWDA Improvement Fund 325 to the 2024 Whitehall Water Main Improvement Project, expense account $325,000, and declaring an emergency. That is Title One. We will now move to first reading. Under first reading, we have a special presentation by Mayor Michael T. Bivens.
Thank you, Mr. President Protem. To you, I was extremely tired and then went over to the library to speak to the young people that were a part of our beautiful community. One of, her name was Dior, that just walked me through, and she's a third grader at, 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 no, it was just, it was just beautiful. But now I'm recharged and ready to give what will be the mayor's 2025 budget presentation. So I thank you and good evening to the president of council, President Protem, council members, and to the community present and watching. It's an honor to present my first proposed budget as mayor of this beautiful city. I want to express my appreciation to this council for your collaboration and stewarding our resources both this year and in the past. I'm also appreciative of the questions that I've received from council prior to this presentation because I know how much you're reviewing and approving the city budget means. It is a vital role in making sure that we allocate resources responsibly and in accordance with our city mission, vision, and values. Thank you in advance for exercising your due diligence to do what's best for the citizens of Whitehall. It's also noteworthy to thank more people. As you know by now, everything I do is built on the fire in my heart for the city that rings forward together. This 2025 budget presentation is a reflection of that call and evidence that as I stand here this evening, I'm not standing alone. Therefore, I want to acknowledge my staff that has worked hard to propose this budget, along with the hard-working department heads. Each of them have made special effort to analyze and evaluate their departments and use their funding desires to establish 2025 budget goals. Extra special thanks goes to Auditor Stephen Quinzel and Deputy Tax Commissioner Michelle Carberry for their dedicated effort to compile and provide the numbers and the budget data that you will receive. Lastly, I particularly want to thank the nearly 180 people who work for the city of Whitehall. Your dedication, discipline, and focus to the city deserves appreciation, and as your mayor, we cannot thank you enough for the way that you enhance the lives of every resident in our city. As mayor, I'm simply here to serve. The incredible honor to stand before you as a representative of the nearly 20,000 residents of our city, many of whom that have never seen themselves in positions of power and leadership, makes this moment even more special. It's evidence of the progress of Whitehall, and it also reflects the direction that we are moving forward as a city. We are a city wherever we are, regardless of background can contribute to the mission of the city. We are a city that embraces progress, inclusivity, and diverse perspectives while at the same time breaking barriers and trailblazing ideas. I pray that everyone knows by now that I serve wholeheartedly and intentionally. It's the cornerstone of the shared efforts of this administration. Just like I said earlier this month, on November 1st, we brought many service providers, along with nonprofits from across the community, to lock arms in a commitment to serve the residents of the Whitehall where they are. This new covenant will not be a one-off. It is the first step of what will become Whitehall's first office on neighborhoods. It will be a regular, intentional, and focused program to serve our citizens where they live, work, and play. I'm also not asking for any allocation in the budget as it relates to that. We will collect data from these efforts and collaboration with our partners and our city departments to identify the needs city departments to identify the needs of persons and the neighborhoods with the greatest needs, and we will simply bring our team to help meet those needs. A few days ago, we discussed with the Whitehall Community Improvement Corporation to bring back the home reinvestment program. Once finalized, it will continue and demonstrate our commitment to supporting current homeowners in their efforts to improve their homes, neighborhoods, and Whitehall community. In the Department of Parks and Recreation, we're fixing public areas to improve the experience in our parks. Furthermore, in the Clerk's Office, we will create Whitehall's ability to process passports and other essential services in preparation for our citizens to see the world outside of Whitehall. To ensure the services we offer are as efficient as possible is why the first one hundred days, I declared that we would continue our focus on development, neighborhood revitalization, and consider significant changes to how we work as a community. This required assuring that our zoning keeps doors open and fosters pathways to increasing housing and in particular, affordable and sustainable housing. As always, we will continue to determine which opportunities make sense for Whitehall. We need to make sure that we are ready to take advantage of these opportunities, especially the ones created by the passing of issue forty seven and the economic opportunities that will occur along Main Street and Broad Street due to bus rapid transit. All in all, this proposed budget for twenty twenty five will assure that we remain focused on our priorities while also identifying ways to make our city government more efficient. This budget assures that we will remain competitive to attract qualified candidates and that our compensation levels are sound enough to retain the employees we have. We will make better use of our city website and technologies, and this budget will assure this better use while moving towards revamping our online presence while also finding opportunities to modernize the way we connect to the community. We're currently in the final stages of the design and launch of our mobile app to improve resident access to city services. As mayor, I will remain focused on strong financial analysis to provide comprehensive, efficient, and diligent use of our city finances. My mind remains focused on our future. Which brings me to the reason we're here today in the presentation, and we'll receive these packets in a moment, of our twenty twenty five operational budget. As you know, I do things a bit differently, and this presentation is consistent with that theme. My intention is not to be the only one to present the budget, it's also to share the stage, the story, and paint the picture with the hardworking department heads that helped compile the data. Together, we'll share the story behind the numbers. Because the decisions made in this budget reflect our values and the vision for a Whitehall that will meet the moment, serve the current residents, and also prepare for the ones that are on the way. Notwithstanding, our city is dealing with old infrastructure, low borrowing capacity, and other challenges. This budget meets those challenges head-on with a plan to overcome. Our key focus will be to raise money and upgrade our economic footprint with a mind towards growth. We're taking a look at our TIT properties to make sure that those areas are performing well. We, where we can create significant boost in annual revenue, we will explore those opportunities. We will leave no stone unturned. This budget assures that our capital projects will be committed, that we committed to in the past are still fully funded. It also assures that our debts are covered, making sure that our debt services are strong while at the same time not sacrificing essential services like neighborhood revitalization, public safety, and development. They all remain my priority. This budget also assures that we will be able to increase, and also increase our credit worthiness without raising taxes. Somebody needs to say hallelujah. It will also assure that our credit worthiness upgrades from A to triple A while also keeping us posture to aggressively pursue local, state, and federal grant opportunities to fund city initiatives. In the upcoming budget meetings, our department heads will present and continue the story behind the numbers. The schedule, as Director Rollins just indicated, that will occur in the next few days, on November twenty sixth, you will hear from the Clerk of Courts, the Director of Public Service, and the Fire Department. On December the third, you will hear from the Auditor, Director of IT, the City Attorney. Finally, on December the tenth, you will hear from the Police Department, Parks and Rec, Human Resources, and lastly, Development. But let me give you a brief overview of the budget document you're about to receive. This operational budget reflects a twenty twenty five general fund income tax revenue of forty million six hundred thousand dollars. The general fund expenditures are projected to be thirty six million one hundred dollars, one hundred thousand, and this reflects our collective commitment to public safety, neighborhood revitalization, youth programming, parks, and community recreation, all at the same time delivering high-quality services to our residents. As you can see, the revenue projections are strong. We also know that these things can change quickly, and we have to stay ready. And while as of today, a general snapshot, and I checked Steve, general snapshot of our general fund cash on hand is nearly five million dollars, these funds will rapidly decline with payroll and other expenses. Nevertheless, it's projected that we end well, we end strong, that in twenty twenty four, we will have a general fund revenue balance of nearly seven point nine million dollars. That's a lot. And I promise you that our budget tells our story. It will also make a declaration. The first declaration is that we're getting ready for what's ahead and the growth of the region. Whitehall will not be left behind as the region grows. This commitment to having a strong carryover in the general fund prioritizes the people that are presently in Whitehall and the ones that are on the way. It's a commitment to our ci- that our city remains vibrant and that we meet the moments. Furthermore, this budget makes another declaration. It says that our city employees are valued. Therefore, we're implementing increases for them, not only to comply with state labor law changes, but again, to also make sure that our wages are competitive, to retain and keep the dedicated workforce that keeps us safe, maintains infrastructure, and assures critical services remain. That's why we're recommending a three percent across-the-board rate for every employee whose salary is not determined by a collective bargaining agreement. Continuing to compensate our employees adequately is the step forward to keep the city going in the right direction. And while contract negotiations are currently underway with our unions, we will recommend moderate and competitive increases for our police and fire departments, ensuring that public safety is the primary job of Whitehall city government. As you know, our fire department and police department employees are the ones that run into the burning buildings. They confront the criminals, and they make sure that we sleep safely in our homes. They protect our businesses, and they assure that our visitors have a great experience in Whitehall. And by looking at the numbers, the nearly five thousand six hundred and seventy-eight calls for service to the police department and the five thousand four hundred and forty-five EMS runs and the other data provided, proposed, in this proposed budget declares the priority and shows that we will remain committed to confronting the causes that lead to crime like poverty, homeless, mental health, and addiction services. We can give support to our public safety by providing supportive services, and we can provide the tools to assist and address those root causes. That's why we will use our opiate settlement fund dollars in twenty twenty five to assist. This is how we will prioritize people and how Whitehall will emphasize our commitment to the region. The goal of twenty twenty five is to remain strong and have a carryover so we can make strong investments in the future, including the future creation of an affordable housing trust and land bank. In the meantime, we will start conservative and grow. This commitment in preparation for the growth and economic development in our budget declares that we are getting ready to meet the moment. Our focus will be on families because my staff and everyone knows, my motto also is healthy families create healthy communities. And we will make big moves where we can, again, including taking the steps to discipline ourselves for economic strength by increasing our credit worthiness to prepare for aggressive growth. Therefore, this budget proposal requests the creation of a budget stabilization fund where I intend to come back to council to make a commitment to allocate a percentage of our general revenue to build this fund over time to cover at least two months of our expenditures. Whitehall will be ready for growth and progress, and we will have our aim squarely upon enhancing quality of life. Speaking of quality of life, let's talk about infrastructure for a second. This budget makes a commitment to fixing our roads. So many of you, even today when I had a meeting at the, at the library, ask about road projects, from complaints to praise. And while the proposed budget won't fix every street, we're taking the step incrementally to meet the need. Speaking of need, I cannot thank the residents enough for building a new police department. Look for an invitation for its official open house coming soon when we can solve the issue of the elevator. All in all, this twenty twenty five proposed budget is a budget that works for you. It's created by an administration that seeks to serve and work efficiently while also preparing for the future. As you know, my motto is let's move Whitehall forward together. This moving forward must be in ways that engages residents and encouraging involvement to work together in order to build a better city. Regardless of the state of politics, nationally and locally, here in Whitehall, our commitment to honest, transparent budgeting that prioritizes our core values, city services, with a heart to advance the work that matters most to our residents and their relationship to the region, will assure that each of us embrace positivity and one day make my motto our personal battleground, where we all can proudly proclaim that we are moving forward together. That is my snapshot of the twenty twenty five mayor's budget proposal. What I have before you, council members, are packets as it relates to this budget. Can be sure that I get them in all of your hands. In that packet will also have the schedule for the upcoming presentations, and this will be posted online after, as of tomorrow, so that residents can see what you also have in your hand. And so, thank you for your time and consideration, and I look forward to the next upcoming weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
We can now move on to our first first readings, which is ordinance one oh one twenty twenty four, which is title only.
Mr. President, before you continue reading the title for that, that is, that bottom number is incorrect. I'll pass down the ordinance itself. The, the number that you have on, on that title is off by six thousand dollars, so this number coming around to you is correct. So that title is the, the true working title.
The actual legislation is correct, the agenda is incorrect. So the correct is the thirty seven seven oh?
Thirty seven seven oh five three forty two?
Yes.
Okay, I will read that in. Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, now, ordinance one oh one twenty twenty four, making appropriation for current general fund one oh one expense, expenses, street two oh one expenses and state highway materials two eleven expenses during the period from January one twenty twenty five to December thirty one twenty twenty five, and the total sum of thirty seven thousand? I done that last night. I got trouble with mediums. Thirty seven million seven hundred and five thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and five cents, and declaring an emergency on that one. Is that the correct number?
Yes.
Thirty seven million seven hundred and five thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and five cents. That was title only. Okay. Now, ordinance number one oh two twenty twenty four is also title only, authorizing an appropriation for special revenue internal service and fiduciary expense accounts for the calendar year twenty twenty five, and the total sum of twenty eight million seven hundred and sixty-four thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-six cents, and declaring an emergency, that is title only. Next ordinance is one oh three twenty twenty four, title only, amend the ordinance one oh four twenty twenty three, authorizing and approving the following changes to one sixty-one point three eight and declaring an emergency, that is also title only. Next ordinance, one oh four twenty twenty four, authorizing exemptions of one sixty-one point oh nine A, vacation and sick leave credit carryover, one sixty-one point oh nine eight, for the purpose of retaining a highly qualified employee to the City of Whitehall and declaring an emergency.
President Protam, I'd like to introduce ordinance one oh four dash twenty twenty four and move for the suspension of rules.
Second.
Ordinance one oh four twenty twenty four has been introduced by Councilperson Harcar, seconded by Councilperson Smith for suspension of rules. Ms. Og, would you call a roll, please?
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Second.
One oh one, ordinance one oh one twenty twenty four has been moved for adoption by Councilperson Harcar, seconded by Councilperson Smith. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, would you please call a roll?
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Ordinance one oh four twenty twenty four has been adopted. Next ordinance is one oh five twenty twenty four, title only, is a special presentation on twelve, twelve three twenty twenty four with a public hearing on twelve seventeen twenty twenty four, allowing a special permit under eleven oh three point oh two H to allow five apartment dwelling structures containing six units, excuse me, each, on the property located at seven ninety-six Rosemore Avenue, parcel number oh nine oh 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 one five six three, property owned by Dave Allen. That is a title-only reading. Ordinance number one oh six twenty twenty four, also title only, authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver a purchase option agreement, a purchase and sales agreement, and other appropriate documents on behalf of the city to sell approximately two and four tenths acres of property in the Whitehall Community Park to Heartland Bank for an expansion of its existing headquarters facility and declaring an emergency. That's also title only. We will move to ordinance number one oh seven twenty twenty four, title only, authorizing and approving an amendment to the codified ordinance of the City of Whitehall, one sixty-one table of authorized personnel for the fiscal year twenty twenty five and declaring an emergency. That is also title only. Ordinance number one oh eight twenty twenty four, approving and making a transfer from monies in the ammo supply expense account one oh one point nine six zero point fifty-five thousand five hundred in the amount of forty thousand dollars to the boarding of first verse expense account one oh one oh 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 fifty-nine thousand five hundred, approving a- expense account 101.000.59,500, approving a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $40,000 to the boarding of prisoners' expense account 101.000.59,500, and declaring an emergency.
President Protam, I'd like to introduce ordinance 108-2024 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Ordinance 108-2024 has been introduced by Councilperson Elmore, seconded by Councilperson Heck for suspension of rules. Ms. Al, would you please call the role?
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
President Protam, I'd like to move to adopt.
Second.
If I may, just point of, point of correction here, the prisoners', boarding of prisoners' expense account has the wrong department on it. Uh, the numbers, it should be 960, uh, this is a police department, um, expense account. So instead of 101, 000, 59, 500, that should be 101 dot 960 dot 59, 500. Uh, that appears both places in the title. It is correct in the text of the ordinance, but it was incorrect in the title.
So...
You won't have to amend that because the body of the ordinance is correct. It's just the title, um, so just the, the noting that it's incorrect on there, and then as long as you read the correct title for the adoption, um, the, the body of the ordinance is correct, so there's no amendment needed.
Okay, so when I read, uh, correct it, okay. So was it introduced for suspension or what?
Yeah, have it adopted.
No, suspended.
Suspended, yeah, they say, oh, okay, so I'm gonna move to adopt.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Need a second on the adopt?
Oh, second, I already did.
Okay, ordinance 108-2024 has been introduced for adoption by Councilperson Elmore, seconded by Councilperson Heck. Any discussion, further discussion on this? Ms. Al, would you please call the role?
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, ordinance 109-2024, approving and making a fund transfer in the amount of $149,000, $149,325.00 from various accounts in the Wim-Pity Fund 279, to the Debt Service Fund 401, and declaring an emergency.
President Protam, I'd like to introduce ordinance 109-2024 and move for the suspension of all rules.
A second.
Ordinance 109-2024 has been introduced by Councilperson Elmore, seconded by Councilperson Brown for suspension of rules. Ms. Al, please call the role.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Ordinance 109-2024 has...
Adoption.
Oh, you have it adopted, yeah, good, I got you.
President Protam, I'd like to move for adoption.
A second.
Okay, now, 109-2024 has been moved for adoption by Councilperson Elmore, seconded by Councilperson Brown. Is there any discussion on this? Ms. Al, please call the role.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance 109-2024 has been adopted. We will move to ordinance 110-2024, authorizing and approving supplemental appropriations in the amount of $10,000 from unappropriated monies in the Medical Supply Fund 302, to the Medical Supply Express Account 302.000.50,000, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President Protam, I'd like to introduce 110, ordinance 110-2024, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Ordinance 110-2024 has been introduced by Councilperson Elmore, excuse me, seconded by Councilperson Smith. Ms. Al, would you please call the role?
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
President Protam moved to adopt.
Ordinance 110-2024 has been introduced for adoption by Councilperson Elmore, seconded by Councilperson Smith. Any discussion? Ms. Al, please call the role.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance 111, pardon me, 110-2024 has been adopted. Next is 111-2024, authorizing and approving a fund transfer in the amount of $66,164.12 from unappropriated monies in the Wim-Pity, Wim-Pity Fund 10, 279, to the Debt Service Fund 401, and declaring an emergency.
President Protam, I'd like to introduce ordinance 111-2024 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
111-2024 has been introduced by Councilperson Elmore, seconded by Councilperson Harkar. Ms. Al, please call the role.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
President Protam moved to adopt.
Second.
One, ordinance 111-2024 has been moved for adoption by Councilperson Elmore, seconded by Councilperson Harkar. Is there any discussion? Ms. Al, would you please call the role?
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance 111-2024 has been adopted. Ordinance 112-2024, approving a fund transfer in the amount of $437, uh, $437,337.50 from the Police Department Tax Levy Fund 280, to the Debt Service Fund 401, and declaring an emergency.
President Protam, I'd like to introduce ordinance 112-2024 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Ordinance 112-2024 has been introduced by Councilperson Elmore, seconded by Councilperson Heck. Ms. Al, would you please call the role?
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance 112-2024 has had the rule suspended.
President Protam moved to adopt.
Second.
Ordinance 112-2024 has been moved for adoption by Councilperson Elmore, seconded by Councilperson Heck. Any discussion? Ms. Al, please call the role.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance 112-2024 has been adopted. Next is ordinance 113-2024, approving and making a fund transfer in the amount of $647,315.50 from unappropriated monies of the General Fund 101, to the Debt Service Fund 401, and declaring an emergency.
President Protam, I'd like to introduce ordinance 113-2024 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Ordinance 113-2024 has been introduced by Councilperson Elmore, seconded by Councilperson Smith. Ms. Al, would you please call the role?
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance 113-2024, rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Ordinance 113-2024 has been moved for adoption by Councilperson Elmore, seconded by Councilperson Smith. Any discussion? Ms. Al, please call the role.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance 113-2024 has been adopted. Next is ordinance 114-2024, authorizing and approving a fund transfer in the amount of $252,860.30 from unappropriated monies in the General Fund 101, to debt, to the Debt Service Fund 401, and declaring, declaring an emergency.
President Protam, I'd like to introduce ordinance 114-2024 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Ordinance 114-2024 has been introduced by Councilperson Elmore, seconded by Councilperson Dixon. Ms. Al, please call the role.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
President Protam moved to adopt.
Second.
Ordinance 114-2024 has been moved for adoption by Councilperson Elmore, seconded by Councilperson Dixon. Is there any discussion? Ms. Al, please call the role.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance 114-2024 has been adopted. Next, we have Resolution 31-2024, authorizing the termination, termination of the Jefferson Township Whitehall Joint Economic Development District Contract, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President Protam, I wish to introduce Resolution 31-2024 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Resolution 31-2024 has been introduced by Councilperson Dixon, seconded by Councilperson Heck for suspension of all rules. Ms., uh, please call the role.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. President Protam moved to adopt Resolution 31-2024?
Resolution 31-20... Resolution 31-2024 has been moved for adoption by Councilperson Dixon, seconded by Councilperson Any discussion? Ms. Al, please call the role.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Resolution 31-2024 has been adopted. Our final resolution for this evening is Resolution 32-2024. It will be read by title only, resolving to examine and investigate the Whitehall Police Department work environment pursuant to chapter... Not chapter, pursuant to Charter Section 80. That is being read by title only. Our next thing on the agenda is our second poll public. Anyone wishing to speak, they come forward, they have three minutes, sign the page, and state your name. Okay? Okay, then, community debate board.
I do have a few things. So, there is a craft fair that will be going on at the high school, it's going on December 7th, which is a Saturday, I will get times, uh, I know it's like morning, but I'll get exact times next week. Tomorrow at the high school is a free movie night for family and community members at Home Alone, uh, you do have to sign up ahead of time, doors open at 5:30, um, there will be a concession stand, um, that will cost money, Key Club is the one putting it on, and you just sign up by going to the Facebook page, Whitehall City Schools Facebook page, and then on 12/14 is breakfast with Santa, and it'll be at Aetna. That's all.
Anything else? Okay, then we can move to poll council, we'll start with Councilperson Smith.
Thank you, President Protam, um, thank you to those of you that were here this evening, thank you to those that were here, um, but left early, um, thank you to those who'll be watching, um, tomorrow. I don't really have a lot to say tonight, I don't know, I was like thinking about it. Um, I'm really excited about all the initiatives, um, the mayor has proposed, I'm excited to hear about home reinvestment coming back, I know that's been a very popular and desirable, um, impact in the community, um, I'm also really excited about what an affordable housing trust and land bank program look like in our city, I know that can be really valuable as somebody who's a strong supporter of that, so I look forward to digesting that and seeing all the goals that... That's all I have for the evening.
Thank you, Councilperson Smith. Uh, next is Councilperson Harkar.
Yes, thank you, President Protam. Um, thank you to everyone that's here this evening, I wanted to just take a couple moments and address some comments that were made at last week's council. Um, I, I work with immigrants and refugees and have for many, many years, and I know that the term illegal is often used to describe people, and I just, personally, I take offense to it because I, these are undocumented individuals, they're not illegals, it's a really dehumanizing way to talk about people. Many times when, and thank you, Councilor Brown, I know you kind of tried to figure out maybe what the right words were or what the path was with this, but oftentimes, people may come to you and not have their documentation, they may not know what their immigration status is, and this is because many of the individuals who might come for services are human trafficking survivors, I've worked with children who were trafficked into the country, they didn't know anything about immigration, they just finally trusted someone to help them. I've worked with domestic violence survivors whose spouses didn't file the necessary paperwork when they came here, it's a form of power and control over them. This is a really common technique that's used, power and control over domestic violence survivors, force, fraud, and coercion over human trafficking survivors, those individuals that come here seeking asylum, asylum is a legal process, I know there's a lot of misinformation out there about that, but people present themselves when they come here, they're not, they're not trying to bring in, the asylum seekers are not trying to bring in drugs, they're not trying to do bad things, they literally turn themselves into authorities, and if they had anything on them, it would be a really bad idea. Um, so that, I just wanted to take a moment to address that, I think it's really common to hear that kind of language, and it just takes away from people's humanity, so I felt the need to speak on that. On that note, I do want to say that, um, yeah, I work with people with the Violence Against Women Act to get them documentation they need, we work to get trafficking visas for individuals who have been trafficked, those processes are daunting at best, they take years to go through. Asylum is a very long process, um, the last person I helped to get asylum, it took six years for approval, um, so this is not something that people take lightly. Um, I also want to address the temporary protected status of our Haitian neighbors, I know we don't have a huge Haitian community here in Whitehall, but we do have neighboring communities that have them, temporary protected status is also a legal process, it allows people to work but not gain any public benefits. So oftentimes, it's talked about that people come here and they get benefits and they get housing, if that is happening, please let me know where that is because I need some connections because that has not been my experience of doing this work for 10 years. On that note, I was, um, able to attend the Haitian festival this weekend, State Representative Humphrey came, uh, celebrated the day with our Haitian neighbors up at the North YMCA, and I just find, you know, when you sit down with people and you have food with them and you learn about their culture, you're probably a lot more likely to welcome them into the neighborhood, you might sit down with them at the table, you might invite them to the place of worship or even to your home, um, so just be really careful when you hear that kind of rhetoric, um, used towards people. And it was really unfortunate, uh, when the news media showed up to cover our, our wonderful And it was really unfortunate when the news media showed up to cover our wonderful story of the Haitian community is when we found out about the white supremacists downtown. Um, and so I just want to, you know, condemn that, I'm disgusted by that. And I know, you know, many people are, but I just felt those things really needed to be addressed. So that is all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harcar. Next is Councilperson Dixon.
Thank you, President Pro Tem, Morrison. I'd like to thank everyone in the audience here joining us tonight. We have our two chiefs, thank you very much for coming in. And thank everyone for, uh, who will view this tomorrow night. Thank you to Ms. Harcar for compassionate comments. Just now, I think that was terrific. Uh, and, uh, and Larry Morrison, Mr. President Pro Tem Morrison, thank you for all those words you read. That was daunting, I know, but it was, appreciate it, thank you. And finally, I would like to say to the mayor, you've been very thorough in the explanations and the presentations of what's coming with the budget. Uh, we have the meeting here the one Saturday morning and now this, and I look forward to everything else. So I want to do a praise and then thank you for that. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilperson Dixon. Uh, next is Councilperson Brown.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. Uh, I would just like to thank everyone who attended this evening. I would also like to thank everyone who is tuning in tomorrow and watching this. Uh, first like to say, I appreciate all departments in the city of Whitehall. Thank you to the mayor, thank you to everybody who keeps our city running and for all the great work that you do. I am very excited, uh, I'm happy about all the, uh, the great things that have gone on this year, but I'm very excited to see what, what next year has in store for us. So, uh, thank you all again. Uh, Councilperson Harcar, thank you for your words, uh, it was very insightful. You know, not everybody, I think, is as familiar with some of these situations. And so being able to share that, I think, is helpful for a lot of people, including myself. Uh, so thank you for that. Outside of that, I hope everyone has a wonderful evening and great rest of your week.
Thank you, Councilperson Brown. Next is Councilperson Elmore.
Thank you, Council Pro Tem, uh, President Pro Tem. I want to thank the, uh, everybody in attendance. And also want to thank the mayor for his budget snapshot to give us a view of what we have to look forward to. And additionally, the innovative and great initiatives that you're bringing forward through Whitehall is going to make our community a lot healthier and safe. I also echo the sentiments of Councilor Harcar. Very heartfelt, and I know you're very compassionate, um, and you've done a lot of work in the community. I would, um, be remiss if I did not comment regarding, um, Title thirty two twenty twenty four. I was not here, I was ill, but I did want to put my comments forward regarding, um, the, uh, examining to investigate the Whitehall Police Department work environment pursuant to Chapter, um, Section eighty. I have worked in the labor union relations arena for more than almost forty years. And I am unbothered by the unwarranted insults, the disrespect, intimidation, terse comments on social media regarding me and emails to me because of my stance. I'm very clear on this contract right here. The contract is between the city of Whitehall and the Fraternal Order Police, Capital City Lodge nine. I have gone through this contract, and I'm real clear with the recognition and who is the exclusive representative of the bargaining unit or the unit. I am also very clear of the jurisdiction with which we stand as this contract between the city administration and the FOP is concerned. The contract does not give counsel the right to intervene within these proceedings because there is an ongoing investigation and not even after that. I have had conversations with every, not conversations, but I addressed everybody on row call. Shifts one, two, and three, I attended, every row call. Because for me, it is very, very important to understand how people feel in a work environment where they feel maybe that there's an issue. And when they feel there's an issue, when they sign onto a contract and their representative signs a contract and their lead staff signed a contract, it's, it's binding, it's what they are, are held to. And that's their due process and their remedy. Also within this contract, uh, not, management has rights and whenever there are, and there are work rules and initiatives. But probably the most important area in this contract that I took notice of is Article thirteen, Labor Relations Meeting. If you do, if the union or its members feel like there are areas of concern, it says, "The city and the lodge recognize the benefit of exploration and study of current and/or potential concerns or problems, including departmental rules, regulations, and policy." They have within their right to bring those issues to the administration. This is, in my opinion, not in the powers of counsel. There is a due process. Also, there's an intervening grievance at hand, which, in my opinion, has to run its course. So also, that's the labor relations portion. For counsel to be pressured to disregard and usurp the authority of a binding contract, in my opinion, is an abuse of our powers. The members nor the FOP has exhausted the articles within the contract. Instead, they have put, they have put the on, uh, onus of responsibility where it does not belong. I would also encourage counsel to be familiar with the contract that we've adopted so that issues of this nature follow the proper channels before there is a need for counsel to intervene. This is not a trial by public opinion, and it's very clear what they sign off for. I will say this much because of the backlash and the, and the fire that many of the counselors up here have received. In my opinion, for me, I am surrounded by grace and favor. I'm going to do what's right and what's fair. And I'm going to honor the agreements that they have negotiated within this contract. And if anybody has spoken threatening words toward me, and I know they have because I have snapshots of social media and Facebook, I will not hesitate if somebody comes to me in an abusive and threatening manner to file a report at the police department. I take all of this very seriously. Because I am a union and a lifelong union member. I respect union and what it is created to do and to be. And to that end, I will not let the, anybody intimidate me, harass me, or push me to the extent where I feel like I have to file something on them because it will get done. And I'm real clear with that. Disagreements are okay, everyone is entitled to their opinion. They come, in my opinion, opinions come a dime a dozen and everybody has one. But to the degree it turns into something other than in a threatened manner, it will be dealt with. That's why we have safety services. So I want to thank everybody that has availed themselves, that have reached out, talked to, um, law enforcement officers because that's our due diligence to find the truth. And that is the truth. This governs them to where they cannot reach and talk to their administration and then to bring that here is not in order. Thank everybody for watching, have a good evening. Thank you, Mr. President Pro Tem.
Councilperson Elmore, Councilperson Heck, please.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. Um, thank you, everybody that came in tonight, um, everybody that will be watching tomorrow. I want to echo what most people said up here. Um, thank you, Mayor Stevens, for coming with your presentation. I'm really looking forward to the initiatives that you have discussed and reading through, um, the information that you gave to us today. I'm really excited for what's to come this coming year. Um, and thank you, Councilwoman Harcar, for, um, that information. I think you're right, I think a lot of people don't know because they're not in that world like you know it all the time. So I really appreciate that extra information, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Well, I guess it's up to me now. I think I've spoken enough, I would like to thank the mayor for his presentation, excellent job. Thank everyone for showing up, those who will be watching later. We apologize for the inconvenience, the tech, technology, we just can't, can't do anything with it. Ms. Harcar, appreciate your words, very informative, and I thank you.